North American River Otter.
Next, our classes asked our moms and dads to donate lots of treats. We had so many. We organized the bake class on a table. We couldn't believe how many we had.
Then it was time to create posters to hang around the school. These had all the important information on them, like what we were selling, when and where to buy treats, and how much the items were selling for. Of course, our classes got first tips. We practiced making sales and collecting money. We also learned how to make changes if someone needed money back. All items were sold for $1.
The next day, the sale began. We couldn't believe how busy we were. Kids were lined up down the hallway. We were all sold out by 9:00 AM. The second day, our bake sale was definitely a success.
We learned many things about river otters, but the coolest thing was that the female, Tilly, had other pups while we were working on our bake sale. We got to watch the Facebook announcement revealing the four pups' names: Sutton, Kaya, Tallulah, and Talon. Here is a picture of Tilly and her otter and her pups. We also made a thank you for everyone who bought treats from our bake sale.
We were able to send a large donation to the Toledo Zoo. They sent us a nice letter, certificate magnets, and a stuffed animal as a thank you. We learned a lot and had fun running a bake sale. Thank you for listening.
Alright, so Mr. Moore and several teachers from Maplehurst are speaking on potentially changing the kindergarten screening process and how we're handling that. So, they came to me and said, "We have some great ideas. We'd like to pilot that this year and see if it might be what we use going forward." So, Mr. Moore?
Yeah. Good evening. Had a great day. I don't know if you're still here, but it's always nice to hear them do the pledge, especially one of the last years. Okay, we are, uh, how it all began, years and a month ago, we had a grade level meeting. And, um, uh, one of our kindergarten teachers, Mrs. Wire, Blue Wire, her husband teaches in another district, came to me and said, "Ken, we've got to look at some things different about kindergarten screening." She might have even put her hand right in the hallway or outside. Sure, we can take a look at it. She emailed me some things about the calendar and how things are changing. And then, like a good principal, I said, "Oh, we'll get to it later." We had another meeting about a month and a half ago, and it came up there. And she said, "Remember one?" I said, "Yeah, I do, too." And she has other obligations. She'd be here. I said, "Okay, what do we have?" She goes, "Well, can we meet with you as a group?" I said, "Sure." So, outside of we got a grade level meeting, things done, and then we met up the next week, and there were maybe four of them, the teachers together. And they started talking about doing things a little bit differently. And first we had, and I asked, "Okay, well, what are we looking at?" Well, we want to get to know our kids a little bit better as we go through it, because kindergarten is like no other grade. Kids come in, we don't know much about them. The data that we have, and it brought me to remember this book from a long time ago, Data, 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 and all the data that we have, and right now, we collect a lot of that with our literacy group, Mrs. Rema, and filling us full of that information with our kids now. But we, we are lacking that information on the kids that we don't know about that are coming to us, and we find them in April and May in the school year, March, April, and May when we actually do our screening. And it's literally in this building, and then some of them are at the evenings or at Maplehurst. And they're 20, 20-minute glimpses of the kids. So, the first thing they said is, "We want to do some things that are going to be a little more intensive of that." And they mentioned, uh, meeting with them and seeing them engage with other kids and seeing, uh, what they're doing there, offering the parents a questionnaire. A lot of the buildings do that, and I've downloaded three or four of them for our next meeting to look at. Irregardless of what we decide to do, we need input from them. So, part of the other discussion was, in that time frame, we need like two or three, three solid days to have the parents come in and the kids come in. Because right now, what we do is we have three students for every 15 minutes. And that works its way through two solid days, and we have a couple evenings of two and a half, three hours. That gets us to approximately, in the past couple of years, we've had, oh, maybe 100 and, um, maybe 130 to 140 kids screened before the school year. Then in August, there's always that thought of the bus driving around town. People saying, "Oh, my God, school starts in two weeks." We're screening, and we usually have another 25 to 35 kids come to that piece. And again, that, that happens in a matter of two weeks before school starts. So, it's, wow, we don't, and these guys behind me don't get to know their kids. So, the premise of their discussion with me was, we want to do some observations and have our kids, have the kids that we're going to work with next year engage with each other, either in a playtime or a play circle, or do some things, or ask them some other questions outside of the traditional Dial-4 assessment that we do. Okay, so I'm gonna give you a copy of these. I'm gonna ask for them back, because it's a secure document. I think I did this before with you. And these are normed. Let me just take one and pass it down. So, what that does is, that gives us a small picture. And it's called, if you look at the very top, the Dial-4 when you get it, it's called the Speed Dial, because it's meant to be quick and get those kids through it. When you have a large number of kids, like we do, you, you take that into consideration. I also have to take into consideration, take into consideration the fact that we have been experiencing a lot more needs from our kids, and we have to be sensitive to that. We have a lot more needs with our kids, um, being with their social and emotional wellbeing that is hitting with the teachers behind me right now, the first time ever coming to school, the first time for them, many of them engaging with other kids in that number of 20 or so in a classroom. It's a tough thing to, to address as they go through it. There are a lot of other behaviors that we are finding over the past few years. I attended a CPI class this afternoon with Mrs. Robin Wells. She put that on for us. She addresses a lot of those things. She's presently working with one of our students. We also have an outside resource, the ABA Association, that's working with, I think, three or four of, excuse me, of our students right now in working with those behaviors, creating behavior improvement plans with our kindergarteners, because it's a, it's a need that's there. To eliminate or try to reduce that need, or try to address those needs, would be more time individually during that screening time. So, that's impartiality what we're looking at, because we're looking at pretty solid days to have that time with our staff and our potential students to get to know them a lot better. To get to know them in that about a 40, 40 to 45-minute interval what we're looking at doing instead of a 15-minute time. Okay, so we're looking at getting more time and engaging them in different activities. Our preschool does, on certain Mondays, one Monday during the week, they do a play-based assessment, which is a piece that comes through. You're familiar with that as a school psychologist. That piece, it analyzes those things, and teachers go around and look while kids are playing. How do they interact with each other? Do they parallel play? Do they play by themselves? Do they engage in, uh, discussion with each, with each other? Are they very quiet and they're very shy? Usually they would be because they're with kids they don't know. Other cases, kids are gomineering. They'll take over certain situations. Those are pieces of information that we don't get out of a 15-minute screening. So, that's what we're looking to do, is using this for the three, you're getting three days to gather that information. So, in the meeting, I said, "Sure, it sounds like a great idea. Okay, let's move forward with that." And, uh, for, you know, we can look at this for, no? They, they said, "We need to do it now, because of the behaviors we're seeing and the interactions we need to have with our kids right away, so we can look at that." So, I heard that, and here we are. Um, part of our obligation as a district is, because of a law called Child Fine, that's what kindergarten screening encompasses. We do vision and hearing at that, at that time. We also are obligated to look for kids, and on this dial, since it's normed, there's a cutoff. If students are below a certain cutoff, we have to investigate what areas they're in in this assessment. This assessment has 10 areas in it. The longer dial has three different parts. It has a fine motor. It has a, get my notes here. It has a fine motor. It has a concept, and it has a language. The most important, the last part, has a behavioral component, of which there are questionnaires that... Kind of where we're at with the proposal. The other piece would be those three days. That's the important piece. With the coming of the end of the school year, we're looking at, with the last week of school being Memorial Day and that Monday, Tuesday, we're looking at having is our kindergarten graduation. So, our kindergarten graduation on that Tuesday would be a good marker to say, we're, we're looking at stopping school for kindergarten kids, students there. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday will be those days we would have for, uh, screening purposes. Now, I've had six or eight phone calls already about when screening started. One, I just have one, just Mom and Board wanted to meet today, um, because that is, this is the time of the year. Those are the parents. Yeah, you're ready to look. You're ready to go. The ones that usually we don't hear about till August, we need to get better at advertising that and putting that information out there. Okay, so that kind of, in a nutshell, what we're looking at and the rationale as to why. If you have any questions of me or have several of my staff here, if you want to ask them some questions or myself that you might have, those are some of the reasons why we're looking at, at doing this and the positiveness that we can have out of this and looking at our kids that are, that are coming to us next year.
Well, you answered some of the questions I was typing. So, one, um, I, first of all, I told Mr. Cooley, our educator's been a mess, so I don't even feel like the board needs to tell you that this is a great idea. But to me, it is a great idea having some kids that want their kindergarten screening. Um, but I was worried when, how are you gonna get these parents that kind of wait until the end of August to hop onto this, this year? Because other than that, I think it's just wonderful, and I don't see why waiting, why wait. But how do we get that shift of shaving a couple days off and bringing the, the screening, and how do we get those messages out?
Usually what I do is I visit, this time of the year, I visit every one of our area preschools, and we also put information out that help me grow, uh, goes up to grade, age three. At age three, then they are transitioned into, if there's a DARLAN IEP, then they become higher-attained students, in which we are, larger numbers are hitting there, um, in that capacity. So, I, I go to each one of the area preschools, deliver a letter. I used, before it was, everything's online now with final forms, and, and the signup sheet I have is online through Acuity Scheduling. Um, so, we used to give packets to those, um, students, as well as to, uh, uh, the early, uh, education center over at St. Paul's. They also have, oh, I forgot the name of the, uh, program over there for the Hispanic students. Kinder, so we provide that, their information in Spanish for them to. E H O B is often forgotten, but we can, we have, they have a preschool out there. We send the information there and deliver that packet to them. Usually, it's the kids who aren't in preschool that we don't know how to get, other than my sitting outside of, uh, Walmart or a place like. And I've had, I, I've had, uh, people from, uh, OBE tell me that, you might need to do that. It's getting really important for, they're, they're in, our people, they're our kids. Because ultimately, they have to come through Maplehurst as our school system is right now. In a few years, I'll be across the street, and everybody will be like, "Oh, this should be nice, too." But they do. It's, it's an ongoing concern. It's getting, I've often talked about getting back to back, gonna have to drive that bus around town. And saying, "Hey, I see how many schools coming up. Keep learning screenings." Yeah, uh, but that is, I, I, I'll watch you. Teachers, anything you want to, uh, input or chime in on? I see like three or four of them right now, or four of them that I, I just look at. I'm in their classrooms routinely, uh, dealing with behaviors and students that are having a rough go of schooling, having a rough go of, of understanding how to stay in a classroom by the state of C. It's March.
I think the biggest reason, Adam, is why, I know Mr. Cooley adds, like, why should we do this? What's the big incentive or the big focus? Is there are so many behaviors, and, um, when you do screening and you spend five minutes with a kid, you don't see a whole picture. And if we were able to have more time with these kids, we can gather more data, more information, and just more notes about the child, like, hey, Jimmy might need this, or Jimmy might need that. And just having those observational notes is so important. So, when we're placing these kids on class lists, um, a teacher doesn't have, you know, 10 behaviors in a classroom. And I'm not saying that, you know, we can prevent everything, you know, because there are going to be things that just come up. But we're just trying to be proactive and help our team, like, how can we better serve our students? And when you have nine behaviors in a classroom, you know, it, it, it's very hard for that teacher. And so, if there are means, we just kind of want to, you know, when we're doing classless, hey, if we can spread these out, so the kid gets the time that they need, the student gets the time they need, and the teachers can dedicate that time to that student instead of, you know, having 10 behaviors in a classroom. I think it's one of the biggest things that the kindergarten team wants to try to alleviate, just try to spend more time, get more data, and then we can, you know, do class lists a little bit more thoroughly and really place these kids and spend more time talking about them and collaborating with the team.
Because right now, it's just me looking at a list and getting the data, trying to balance out boys and girls and seeing where they are, not knowing very much about who they are. And I'll just read this quickly in this, uh, this book on Data, Data, and Who Are We? Continuous Improvement Planning begins by asking a question that can be answered with demographic data. Who are we specifically? Who are our students? Who are, who is the staff? Who is the community? The answers to these questions are important to understanding the demographic characteristics of school, student, staff, and community in order to establish the context of classroom, school, district, and community. It's important to understand student and community populations now, because it's those two groups whose needs must be met. It's also important to know how these populations have changed over time. As these trends indicate, whom the school will be serving in the future, which in turn helps inform and plans for the future. This is the most important sentence. This information can also help teachers understand their professional needs. It's changing how we teach. It is. It's changing my day. It's changing their day. Our kids are learning in different ways. They're learning from their, they're learning quickly from their phones. They can change their topics. And it's a number of things that, uh, that these ladies have to deal with during the day. And, and the less we can impose upon them and the more that we can give them in professional development, excuse me, the better off they can teach. And I think that's the importance of these three days, is gathering as much data as we can.
Okay? So, you have a yes. Proceed.
Okay.
Make sure we're communicating to obviously our current parents.
Yeah.
So, we'll have our kindergarteners at the start, our seniors on the other end.
Yes.
Three days, graduate.
There you go.
Yeah. All things are beautiful.
I really hope this makes a difference.
Yeah. And hopefully, the year from now, when the Mac will be able to report that.
We'd love to see statistics.
Yes.
Thank you.
There you go. One more.
Thank you for coming to get in the floor. They'll put a photo inside of it. Thank you. All right. Public participation. Each person who wishes to address the board will be asked to give his or her name and address. Remarks should be limited to three minutes in length. If after everyone wishes to do so has an opportunity to speak, additional comments can be made up to a lot of time of 30 minutes.
Lucy Hope's, 32 East Down the Street. Last year, I was invited by the Norwalk School Levy Committee to help fund, help, excuse me, to help with our levy. I had already had a full plate. I was more than willing to step up. That meant attending weekly meetings, making phone calls, and walking the neighborhoods to inform the community, all to help ensure the levy's success. And Norwalk voters a delivery. We secured Ohio School Facilities Commission funding to build a new K-8 building with 52% of the money coming from tax dollars that we, the taxpayers, have already contributed to. The biggest hurdle was behind us, or so we thought. During their campaign, both Mr. Dunlap and Mr. Messenberg appeared to support the new schools, discussing the sale or trade, or, excuse me, discussing the sale or trade of county-owned land. However, now that the time has come to act, Mr. Dunlap has opposed an offer of over $9,000 per acre over the original suggested amount. But without a motion, that number and any further discussion has vanished. And then there's Mr. Messenberg, who has abstained from voting roughly 65% of the time due to conflicts of interest. If he cannot participate in key decisions, why, that impact the very people that elected to serve, he was elected to serve, then why did he run for office at all? Now, for the reasons that remain unclear, the Huron County Commissioners have placed unnecessary roadblocks in front of Norwalk School District residents. You may wonder why I'm addressing this at a school board meeting instead of commissioners' meeting. The reasons are simple. Public sessions are held at 9:00 in the morning on Tuesdays and some Thursdays, a time when most of us are at work. There are no evening meetings. And if you can't attend, you must submit in advance your script or approval before being allowed to speak. These restrictions on public participation having, making, having open, honest discussions, nearly impossible. The requirement for a submitted script is mighty, mighty close to violating a citizen's First Amendment right of free speech. Plus, if they don't like what you have to say, you are escorted out of the room. Why? You would think that commissioners, who earn approximately $70,000 a year, which equates to about $1,300 per meeting once a week, would have plenty of time to listen to their constituents. How can they claim to represent the people who they refuse to lis, when they refuse to listen? So, that's why I am speaking here during a meeting that is livestreamed and will be archived, so that my message reaches them loud and clear. Huron County Commissioners, it is time that you listen to your constituents. Approve the sale of the land to the school board at a fair market value without inflating the price at an unreasonable lesson level. Commissioners, we are asking you to do the right thing for your community. Kids in school now and in the future generations are counting on me.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments or concerns? We have a fourth item, agreement with WCT for owner's rough services. Is there a motion to approve this item? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burkett, yes. Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Rizan Daller?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, before we call for a motion for executive session, the board does want to issue our own statement. Uh, we're gonna split this up. So, Eric, if you would like to start?
Norwalk City School District Board of Education is extremely disappointed with the Huron County Commissioners' refusal to meet with the board to discuss the sale of this portion of the land on Shady Lane Drive to the board for construction of a pre-K 38 building. Without the land currently owned by Huron County, the much-needed school building cannot be built in the best possible configuration and location for the community and students. Although Norwalk City School District currently owns 20 acres in the middle of Huron County's 23.36 acres, that is not enough acreage for the best configurations to have appropriate traffic flow, elementary fields, recess space, access to the senior center, and would require a multi-level building. Such an outcome would be a great unfairness to the students, residents, and taxpayers of Huron County and Norwalk City Schools.
On November 5th, 2024, the Norwalk City School District electors approved a 5.4 mil, 37-year bond issued for the construction of a pre-K 8 school across the street from Norwalk High School on Shady Lane Drive. According to Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, uh, CC, the state agency that will pay $52 million of the cost of the project, the land needed to build the pre-K 8 school. If the county commissioners refuse to sell the land to the district, it will mean that the district must either build a multi-level elementary building with no options for traffic flow and green space or acquire a 40-acre parcel likely outside of Norwalk city limits and away from the high school, losing the campus of its existence.
The board has tried on several occasions to meet with the commissioners. At each time, the board has either been met with no response from the commissioners or by the commissioners removing the board from the meeting adjutant's. Prior to their election, the Huron County Commissioners, Brad Messenberg and Tom Dunlap, reached out to Superintendent Brad Cooley to schedule a meeting to learn about the school district building project and needs to achieve its goals. Both commissioners were very positive about the possibility of a new pre-K 38 building. Since the election, the Huron County Commissioners have scheduled and canceled two public meetings with the board and rejected a written offer of $11,000 an acre for the land. This offer was based on qualified appraisal of the cost of the project before by an outside appraiser. After the board's offer was ignored, the commissioners had chosen not to agree to a meeting to discuss the offer or even present a written counteroffer.
Commissioner Messenberg has stated that he and the other commissioners received an opinion from county prosecutor Jim Sinnerly, that he must abstain from discussions related to the potential sale of the property because of his portion of ownership of a family business that could possibly bid on the school construction project. The board is asking that the commissioners will release this opinion, since Mr. Messenberg has indicated that he remains committed to transparency and integrity in my role as the county commissioner. If the opinion is supported by the Ohio Ethics Laws, the board is open to working with the commissioner to work out a way that any ethical conflict could be avoided. It is the board's sincerest hope that the commissioners recognize the power the school plays in our communities, that the commissioners recognize the huge positive impact that the construction of this building will have on the local economy. It is important to remember that Norwalk City School District voters are also the county voters.
We'll share that with the newspaper, but we wanted to make sure we had our own statement. I also want to say that I am very supportive of the statement that came prior, previously from Mr. Cooley. Um, a couple of things I want to touch on. We've had a lot of positive feedback, so it just hit the paper on Tuesday. I first want to personally thank Commissioner Dunlap's words at the Tuesday meeting. I read them. I wasn't attended to the meeting, or I wasn't attending the meeting, uh, but I feel like he was spot on and deserves, uh, some praise for the... I wasn't attended to the meeting or I wasn't attending the meeting, uh, but I feel like he was spot on and deserves, uh, some praise for the words that he said and the connection to the community that this project will do. We've had no communication with anybody but the commissioners. The only communication we've had from Mr. Sinnerly is a records request. The other question that I personally received is why did we vote for this levy in November? So when they were approved with OFCC, you have a year to get your funds from the community. So you have to have your part. So OFCC is committing their part, but our community has to commit theirs. With that... Was, I still have goosebumps, as I said, extremely supportive of our community, but we didn't know that we were going to be able to get that the first try. So we had no choice but to believe that we had level-headed people becoming commissioners, and I still believe we do. And starting January first, we would all be able to sit down and have open discussion. So that is why this was on the levy for November's vote. And I believe that it shows one thing for sure. We have the community's support for this building. So yes, we had the vote, we have secured the funds, and now to build the school, as we just said in our statement, that makes the most sense because no one's going to remember in ten years, twenty years, thirty years, if we build a multi-level school and we can't get roads off the, or get cars off the shady lane and we have no recess space. Why did that Board of Education build this school? Why did we waste a hundred million dollars on a school that doesn't make sense? No one's going to remember the commissioners and the board sitting here today. But what we could do is build the school that will be remembered as the best thing that's happened since this school that we're sitting in now.
I do have to say that I am absolutely disgusted by the politics involved in trying to make this land purchase. Something that is a win-win for everyone involved from the city, surrounding communities, and the county should receive an enthusiastic unanimous yes vote from the county commissioners. Unfortunately, due to politicking from prosecutor Sinnerly, the deal has been held up for years. There is no conflict of interest or possible ethics violation for the commissioners to vote. The only ethics violation is by Sinnerly's office and his constant interference with the deal. Skip Wild, Commissioner Skip Wild at the time, should not, should have been able to vote in the twenty twenty-two, but again, Sinnerly said that he was not allowed. It seems Mr. Sinnerly does not have the best interest of the children or the taxpayers who voted overwhelmingly for this project in mind. His behavior is disgrace and a disservice to our community, and I'm calling for investigation about how Ethics Committee and the Ohio Attorney General of his behavior in office.
Thank you.
So as for my comments. There are aspects of society that transcend politics. Areas of our lives that can't be decided based on political affiliation. The education of the next generation is one of those areas. See, the primary concern of education is not to look good, but to do good for the next generation. See, education isn't about taking advantage of loopholes or, but it's about attempting to inspire lifelong learners. And so I ask our commissioners, is our primary concern looking good or doing? I think I can speak for everyone on this stage in saying that we didn't come into our roles because we were experts in land deals. We didn't assume our positions so that we could even build buildings. No, we came into these roles because we wanted to ensure people, namely students, were prioritized over politics and processes. We came into these roles to be public servants. We came into these roles knowing that serving and sacrificing go hand in hand. We knew that serving comes with a cost, but it's a cost that pales in comparison to the impact on lives that we can have. Commissioners, what cost are you willing to pay so that others may benefit? In what ways will you disadvantage yourselves so that others might be advantaged? Commissioners, is your primary concern to serve or to be served? See, me personally, every time I step on this stage, there's a name that comes to mind. That name is Stephen McKinnney. For most of you, you probably have never heard this name before in your life, but Stephen is my why. You see, Stephen came to live with my wife and I when he was just a high schooler. We thought we could help him. We thought we could inspire him. We thought we could usher him into a future that he could not even imagine. But much to our surprise, it was while Stephen was living with us that he decided to drop out of school. In fact, we were even more shocked that less than two years later, we would look at that kid in a casket. Every day I wonder, what if? What if we had been more available? What if we had been more insistent? What if I had played a more prominent role in, in his life? Stephen Dre McKinnney is my why. Commissioners, I compel you to ask yourselves, what is it that compels you to serve? Be reminded of your why and ask yourself if the decision you are making in alignment with why you came to serve. See, forty years from now, the current circumstances will just be a story that we tell. Commissioners, will you be proud of the story that you have to tell? I call upon the commissioners to put people over politics, service over self, and purpose over profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else have anything before me? No? Good.
I had two experiences today, and I'll speak to those. We had a superintendent treasurer meeting in San Dusky, so Joyce and I were there. We had superintendents from the county that came, and if you've read what I submitted yesterday, media response, was very clear that all Herring County superintendents are for this. It's mind-blowing to them why this is a misopportune. Like, this is an absolute layup, and how can we screw this up? So when I spoke in front of the commissioners in the past, there were two county, or excuse me, two Herring County superintendents there. There are multiple ones that want to now come and sit before our commissioners because sometimes people say, people outside of Norwalk don't want this to happen. And none of us buy that. None of us buy that at all. Another situation happened today. A young reporter that's not been in Norwalk has come to this area and is going to start reporting in this area is confused. What's the animus? That was a question to me. What's the animus with these two individuals, with you, with your board, with your district? You know, I can speculate. I can say on one individual what I think plays, but it doesn't matter. What's the animus was the question. I don't know. Only God knows that. But as Eric said, this is meaningful things that are going to be our future. This, this is a simple thing that should be done, that Dave Light, county commissioners from city to county, we should be shaking hands, smiling, and be proud of what's happening. Why are we fighting each other on the simplest of tasks? We need to get the land deal done so we can move on to the design of that building and make sure our community is proud based on what that build is.
Why are we not all standing in the green right now, shaking hands and being part of something that will be a forever legacy? Great. Any other comments before executive session? Okay. Executive session, following purpose. Follow Ohio Rise Code one-two-one point two-two to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, unsold or unfit for use property in accordance with section five oh five point zero of the Ohio Rise Code. We have a motion to move into executive session. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkett?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Rizan Daller?
Yes.
Thank you.
How does executive at eight oh nine P M? Before we start, we'll make one statement. Eric?
Yep, so we've consulted with legal counsel and are in the midst of developing our next step's threat.
All right, moving on to treasurer reports.
Okay, so first we have our February twenty twenty five financial reports. It's been there, we had a treasury bond matured January thirty first. It was actually bought at a discount, ninety nine point seven oh four, that means we didn't pay the full price for it. That made the interest rate on it one point four seven seven. So we traded it in, a new C D for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars at twelve point two for twelve one. So that was a pretty good trade. Food service in February were still showing a negative balance of a hundred and forty four thousand. But that was because we had not received their January lunch money yet. Um, it's a federal reimbursement, it was over a hundred and nine thousand dollars. We're still waiting, waiting. Um, and of course we had to pay our bills, we had to pay our salaries, we had to pay our benefits, we had to pay our, you know, for food service. So it makes it really hard when we don't have cash to cover those expenses. So that's often something you hear at the state level about schools or districts have healthy cash balances. Well, we're not going to go school districts, but it's important to have a cash balance for items like this where you have to pay your bills and you're still waiting. And in this case, it's the federal that runs through the state to pay back your reimbursement. Um, it did finally arrive in March fifth, but you know, like two months later. Um, we had, for property tax, we did have two advances in January, we had none in February. Once it's in, we will have the final settlement, I'll be able to give you some more information on that. Next, we have the minutes, we have two meetings, the regular meeting February twelfth, the special session meeting on February twenty seventh. We have a change to the appropriations and estimated resources, the whole six is the cafeteria fund and we're going to increase their estimated revenue. And we're going to increase their appropriations just slightly underneath that. We have a certificate of deposit, that's what I talked about for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, and it's actually the C F A of Beryl, Ohio. The library sent back that the information they sent us last, for last month was incorrect and they had to change the ending term dates for both Kathy Root and each one. Then have a disposal request made in elementary, they were clearing out all library books that were out of circulation. And the North, but the first has getting rid of some wrestling clocks that they actually put out to other school districts to bid on. And finally, we have the resolution accepting the mountain rates as determined by the budget commission. And this is the second step in the budgetary process. You approve the tax budget back in January, it showed the need for the tax revenue, now the budget commission has assigned the rates. So once you approve it, I'll send it back to the county auditorium and ask done for the year. Our overall valuation increased from three hundred and ninety four million to four hundred and ninety six. So you'll see that even with that, our mileage amount is slightly rolling back for our general fund, general fund levies. Next year it was nineteen point one mils, this year it is eighteen point two five mils, that's the general fund outside mileage. The emergency levy went from four mils last year to three point one five mils. Because it's a dollar sum levy, it only brings in the same amount every year, one point five million. So as valuation increases, the mileage rate goes down, it never brings in initial. Permanent agreement levy went from point nine seven nine mils last year to point seven six three mils this year. It was originally passed at three mils, you can see that's rolled way back. Um, but of course property taxes dip you up. The reason for that is inside mileage, we have four point nine mils for North City School District, so that's where you would see your increase in your taxes. And as we know, twenty twenty four is a year of county reappraisal, every three years it's either reappraisal or an update. Reappraisal, they actually come check out your property. Um, so the increase is what, the evaluation of the housing is what drove the increase in the taxes, but it was not proportionate. Even though it was a hundred and two million dollars, valuation increase doesn't bring that in the tax revenue. We'll have the exact number of what the difference is, next one. But here is the best news. When we talked about the bond levy for the new school across the street, we said that it would be five point four mils. That was what we anticipated it being based on the valuation, interest rates. Um, but when they certified it for collection, it's only four point three five mils. So that's a reduction of one point oh five mils, so that's really exciting. Um, and it equates to about thirty seven dollars for every hundred thousand dollar house, so a reduction. So, or think of it, a hundred eighty nine dollars a year for a hundred thousand dollar home, it's now a hundred fifty two point twenty five cents. So that's really good news, that's what we want to hear is that it's less than what we had expected, which is something we thought would happen. Um, but we couldn't be sure, so we really want to find that out, that it's saving our taxpayers money. So that's, that's the end of my report, that part, and we'll have a separate one for the donations.
Thank you Joyce. And a motion to approve items one through seven under treasurer reports. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's really exciting news.
It is, it is, yes.
So everything that they voted for and approved is actually life.
Saving money over.
I'll take the lead.
Why keep it that way? Save on money.
All right, thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Rittenfeller?
Yes.
And then separately, we're going to do two donations. E H O P, as I said with the wrestling clocks, when districts are, have an item to get rid of, they operate it first, usually to other school districts, public school districts. Um, one of the ways they do this is they send out an email, that's what E H O P did, they have a driver's ed card that they're not going to be using anymore. If I got a new car, he said this is twenty eleven, and they sent out an email and said, does any district have used for it? And we were the first ones there, um, and emailed, said, yes, we've taken. So they did approve it at their meeting this morning to allow us to have the twenty eleven Chevy Impala driver's ed car. It's already ready to go, it has the second brake. So that's good because their driver's ed program is doing really good, but there's a lot of time for the students to adapt and drive, so it would really help to have two cars.
Ford Escape for testers, and now Chevy.
Beautiful. So move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Rittenfeller?
Let's stay.
So the second donation, um, was a hundred dollar donation to the high school book club brought by Mrs. Hoakes. Um, and Mrs. London, and still, just, oh, just Mrs. Hoakes, okay. Um, by Kathy Root and memory of Debbie Lomond.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this donation? Second?
Second.
Roll call please, oh, sorry, discussion.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Rittenfeller?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Personnel.
Resignation, we have Anna Brown, she is a Spanish Yale teacher. She's going to work with her husband to go to Kelly's Island and work for the camp, so, uh, congratulations, good luck to her, but we'll miss her, you know. Quality, quality person, she's a trucker grab along, she's a good person there, so. Second is employment of Jennifer Orth as special needs aide, she actually will be a lead working with Carrie Lambert, who we recently hired there in the classroom, so she'll be working with her. Uh, change of classification, Ethan Gilbert, uh, from cook to transportation assistant, effective March three, twenty twenty five. Employment of substitutes, we have a list there, four, several classified and certified. Number five, employment of baby Battles from the twenty five points this school year, a member ready for the purpose of home instruction. So that's typically one on one instruction, and, and you know, Mrs. Battles, she just retired from Norwalk City School District. So we are fortunate to have, because sometimes finding home instructors are difficult to, uh, to land. Six, employment on supplemental contracts, we have Norwalk High School Track, Jacob Fiersen. Norwalk Middle School Track, Alan Beaman and Brooke Leslie, and then volunteer coaching Norwalk Middle School Track, Joseph Suck. That concludes my personnel report.
There are motion to approve items twelve through three under personnel. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Rittenfeller?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
And for approval of energy optimization lighting resolution, we are looking to upgrade to go with L E D lighting. This will be one of the primary spaces you will see, so all of these hanging lights will be removed, these are summer projects. So the summer, so when we come back in the new year in August, we'll have brand new flush mounted lights, L E D lighting, so we're looking to do this. The foyer, um, the front entrance here, the library, all these different spaces that we're looking to improve. So you look at that money, that expenditure, you're looking to save that as well, so I think anybody who makes that switch, over time, you're making your money back and then some. So we're very excited, this whole space between money used here and then money with our Ernst thousand grants, this space will be completely transformed. We'll have, uh, new audio, uh, so the audio, the lighting will be pretty impressive going forward. We have a lot of community, uh, groups using this space, we want to make sure that people can be heard, and we have, uh, projection style, uh, video screens. So when I'm speaking here, I can look out and see those screens potentially rather than looking behind me. So basically bringing it up to where it needs to be in today's, uh, expectation of a presentation in college lecture hall. So that is, that is what we're doing with our energy optimizers, and, uh, we are excited with that, Mr. Baumann, uh, has worked a lot with, uh, with that piece. Uh, two is power for schools, OSB electric program consortium, so here again, by patching with a large group of, uh, schools, we get a better rate of that electricity. Number three is E Rate, five year license contract with Noweka, I'm going to do a handoff to Mrs. Gerber who can speak to that.
So we've used, uh, E Rate money in the past to purchase things like Chromebooks and our, uh, clever touch devices and things like that. And this year we're looking to replace switches in our building, and our switches are basically like giant routers that have a whole bunch of ports that we plug. Everything into like our phones, um, our Chromebooks devices, our access points and things like that. The current switches that we have are almost eight years old now, and so they're getting to end of life and we need more places to plug stuff in. So we're looking to purchase three more switches with that funding, and then also what's on there, the five year, um, license is the support to those. So if they die, if they fail, we'll get instant support from that company to either replace them or repair them immediately.
Thank you. Four, which I could continue with Mrs. Gerber because she's a big part of the calendar committee, so we have met with our district leadership team, we have met. Um, several parents have communicated with us, so there actually is a change, so all these years that I've been a superintendent, there's been no change. From the time it's presented, one month and the following month that we approve it. So the three two hour delays have been removed, there's no longer, I knew there'd be some fist pumping with this. We have teachers here that like it because it's tough, but with students coming in late and getting kids ready in the, in the flow. Um, and, and families, it, it, we understand it makes it difficult, but I said there is a balance because there's so much put upon educators by the state. That we need to provide professional development in time. One day has been added at the beginning of the school year, so if you look at the start of the school year, it's now three days with all staff rather than two. So it's three days with staff and then the, uh, two days with students on that week one. So that was a lot of convincing, my teachers in district leadership team, they made the case to me as to why that makes sense. Because I'm more from a secondary mindset, and I would said, let's put that later in the calendar when I get data that I can actually use. And the case was made by intermediate elementary teachers, like, we need that time now, and that case was strongly made, and I said, let's do that. So if you look So if you look at three two-hour delays to one day there, package wise and time is pretty similar. So that is the calendar, uh, change. Number five, agreement with E H O B for shared services. We are having to do this likely one more year and then we will have our staff trained, onboarded to do what we need to do, will not have to have that partnership. But we're fortunate that we could partner with E H O B, like I said, not only getting a Chevy Impala from them, but also having the educator side because we know super successful program. It is expensive to do this, but we think with our families and the, and the value this brings to our kids and having safe and good drivers, which is critically important, um, is worth it, it's worth it. So we are continuing that for next year. Six is third grade assessments, this is a state requirement, if a school district chooses to go paper pencil. So that's a decision point, do you want to be computer-based testing or do you say we want to be paper pencil? The argument is still there that we want to have students, third grade testing, do paper pencils, so that is what that is. Seven, we have many updated board policies from four point oh one to nine point four five. Again, Dan Lauder, Pepel Wagner, he is the one that updates those. Not a lot, I don't know if you've had time to go through all the policies, but, um, pretty routine language that had to be updated with, uh, as obviously laws are, are passed. And that is all I have.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion to approve items one through seven, your superintendent's? Second?
Second.
Discussion.
My question on the E H O B shared services for the driver's ed, is that because Mister Bliss comes and teaches? Do we have somebody else that's going to be, uh?
Chris, Chris Jackson.
I know he was a classroom instructor, but he is also working through the process of becoming a certified training manager. So with Jeremy Bliss, I mean, that's what the service at E H O B is providing, uh, Mister Bliss as a training manager. Okay, so Chris would be able to teach other?
Yes.
How would you?
Okay, there's a licensing sequence for having to be able to become a full training manager.
Okay. I'm just curious.
And the question has been asked, are we going to grow or like, right now, I think we're probably going to keep it, the number of best we have. And two vehicles will probably fit the bill for now. Because eventually you get to like, you just can't, you can't do a third car, fourth car, once I have everybody, like, we're not. So right now it's probably the place we need to be. But yeah.
And how many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah. In the second semester here, they just finished the course part of it and it was really heavy in the second semester. Which some of that obviously wasn't, you know, the age of the kids as they get ready to, I'm just ecstatic that we're doing it. It's, it's such a savings for the parents, it's, it's awesome.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate the, uh, calendar change, I appreciate the people giving feedback and then being accepted. I hate two-hour delays, I'll be honest, I understand why they were there, but I don't know why we had so many and I was happy when we shaved them off. And now I'm very happy, but this, uh, thank you personally. Any other discussion? Yeah.
One more.
All right. All right, um, uh, roll call please.
Mister Norris?
Yes.
This is Burkett?
Yes.
This is Crawford?
Yes.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mister Rittenfield?
Yes.
Great, any other board discussion or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mister Baumann for securing a loan of a safety grant or, I mean, not, not loan, I'm sorry. A grant for safety, safety grant from the state. If there's a grant out there, Mister Baumann's on top of it.
That was the most reason with, with this school safety grant, we will add an extra layer of security to the high school area. Awesome. So, uh.
How much?
Forty thousand.
Three thousand. So thanks a lot for, for getting that.
You know, in the attorney general's office, I mean, they're preparing that with their school safety grants. I'm very appreciative of that because, you know, in the last year, things have started to get tighter with grants.
Saw it on the news, Dan Hough, right?
We better.
Great, that was awesome.
I feel like if there was an award for grant.
These would be.
Trophy would be there.
You don't, you don't allow us to get cakes or anything, so we created for this, maybe we'll make you like a badge that you have to wear.
We had our sports award and robotics, that awards ceremony, as you know, was last night, so a lot of, uh, fun was had throughout the winter season. Uh, what was not mentioned, obviously, was the musical, I know some of you attended, so the casting crew, I know Mrs. Rogers was here, but super impressive this year. You would not even believe it's a high school program. Characters were hilarious.
They were so good.
It was, it was fun and obviously it's a fun show with track that is good for the little all the way to the, uh, the old ones.
It's hard to pick out like the best characters, they're all good, but I have to say Donkey.
Yeah.
I mean, man, I was cracking up and then honestly, the, the king, I don't, his knees, I have to be, I mean, no matter what he had on his knee though, to, to dance and truck around that whole time on his knees, I mean, and that, that little detail made that so perfect, I don't know, so they did a great job.
Eddie Murphy would have had a rough. Just Donkey.
Close so naturally, it was so funny, it was a really good, really good show. And, uh, Mister Kraft again, his hors d'oeuvres and man, I think my husband comes through the hors d'oeuvres, obviously. I'm the musical girl, he's like, who's, what's Mister Kraft taking? So yeah, and then he was in there by himself, serving everybody, so that was awesome.
Still wondering where our dinners are.
Yes.
So one more thing on the timeline, so Elena Gonzalez contacted me today, so we're looking to have a meeting on Friday. So she doesn't know if she physically can come here or it's going to be a call, but we're getting the information ready so we can start putting out to the architects and that little timeline of what's our expectation, so what they're going to be putting in the, the language that we will submit that will, uh, for architects and eventually for C M R. So that progress is happening, so I will know, but she said that we're planning the afternoon this Friday and then you get to see what's in there to make sure that we're solid with what our expectations are. And then we'll start seeing, so exciting process, that's the next step for Elena Architect. And then, you know, handful of weeks after that will be the construction manager at risk. And that's when you know progress is happening and that's when you know that, yeah, secure this land and then we can get moving because, uh, time is of the essence.
Any other discussion, more comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mister Norris?
Yes.
This is Burkett?
Yes.
This is Crawford?
Yes.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mister Rittenfield?
Yes.
Thank you.